Order at 5:35 PM.
Wait a minute.
What?
5:35, okay, go ahead.
Secretary. Board members present are Mr. Jack Bailey, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Ms. Maris El Kiano, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. There are no board members absent. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of the meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation will be given by Ms. Nelda Sullivan and the pledges by Mr. Marshall Kendrick. Will you please stand?
And, Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to be today thankful for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us, but with heavy and broken hearts for those among us who have suffered such damage. We pray that you would be with each and every individual as they undertake this massive effort of cleanup and rebuilding their lives. We thank you for our school district. We thank you for the people that teach and lead our children, and we thank you for the leaders of our district. We ask that you would lead and guide and direct us as we make decisions regarding future events and endeavors regarding our school district. We ask that you would be with the leaders of our country as they make decisions in the best interest. Be with first responders wherever they may be. With these things we ask in my name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge America flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You Texas flag? Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. No committee meeting?
No. We're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee. 551.071 to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty of the district under the code of professional responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. When the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer. 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We'll reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM. Okay. Come on, guys. All right.
They used to bawl when they did.
Well, at the end, when they came back, I said, "Is that Chris Swan?" She came to a meeting. I said, "Y'all don't know this, but Tom doesn't show up for meetings," and I'm like, "Tom, you gotta be kidding me." I said, "So, when you first..."
We're gonna reconvene in open sessions.
Like, I got work.
Okay. First on the agenda is public hearing on the community school, and we have a visitor in the back. We have a visitor that would like to... We're having a public hearing on the community school. Do you know anything about that, sir?
Where are you? Where are you? Do you know where you are?
You're not at the microphone.
Things have changed since you were here last time.
And will you please fix the air conditioner?
I don't do that anymore.
I know.
Really, it all bad.
You know, every year, we have to apply to the state for the optional flexible school day funding for the community school, and that's why we're having this open hearing. And I think Hope has the applications that have to be signed and so on, and every year we send those in, and every year we get approved for that. And so, just FYI, I thought you might be interested, is that this last year, we had a record 170 students graduate from community school. Which gives us a total, since we've been opened, of over 1,000 students that have earned diplomas.
Awesome. That's great.
So, that's a good deal. We have about 70 registered right now. Well, we did have 70 registered. We'll see. I've heard from most of them. I think they'll all be back, and so, we will be communicating with all of them the next few days, and hopefully Monday, we'll have a full house again.
That's awesome.
So, we're good to go.
So, is anyone here to speak on the community school?
About the administrator of the school?
Big now, forever, there's your peace.
See, when you're gone a long time, Tom, you don't have friends like you used to have.
I know. Well, I'll just fade away into the sunset.
Absolutely not.
I've still got a couple, I think.
You do.
Thank you.
Okay. No one here to speak on the community school. We certainly appreciate your efforts and what you do for people in our community, kids in our community, that probably would never, never get... reach their goals without you guys.
Well, it's interesting. We have quite a few that are enrolled at San Jacinto.
Oh, that's awesome. Wonderful. That's really good.
You instill that can-do attitude with them, and so, they realize that they can go further and make greater achievements.
Did you? Okay. I don't take any credit for that.
How about Clute?
Certainly not Kenny. I just meant he hadn't been here long enough. Covered myself very well. Okay.
I think you've been here too long.
I still haven't been initiated.
Okay. No special recognition, no public comments, no one signed up to speak unless Tom wants to speak again?
Uh, once is enough.
Okay. All right. Then, we'll move to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is personnel section, and believe it or not, we have no administrative personnel. So, second on the agenda is consideration and possible approval of reclassification of the executive director, network services, to director, technology administration, and customer services.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion?
Board members, this was brought on, the changes in that department, by the retirement of Mark Miller. So, there were some downgrades of positions, as well as changes. You can see on the organizational chart, addressing other positions in your next item as well.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of reclassification of a programmer slash analyst and a desktop technician to network systems administrator.
So, move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Kiano. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is certified personnel, and that's for information only. Moving to the educational section, consideration and possible approval of partnership support agreement with communities and schools Southeast Harris County for the 2017-18 school year.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of six days of in-district professional development services from the Region Four Education Service Center, ESC, focused on modeling instruction strategies in career and technical education.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of the subscription renewal contract with ESC, Region Nine, for... I'm sorry, Region 11, for Discovery Education streaming for the 2017-18 school year.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of ongoing subscription with Texas State Library and Archives Commission for the school year 2017-18.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. This... The next item was approved on August 31st at the special call board meeting, and the item following that was approved on that date as well. So, we'll move on to number seven, consideration and possible approval of sole source purchase with N4... What does that mean?
It's a product within the Lawson system, correct, Arthur?
Okay. N4 for renewal of our annual maintenance for the N4 Lawson system for 2017-18 school year.
So, move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next, consideration and possible approval of multiple grant awards and three corresponding interlocal agreements with Harris County Department of Education.
So, move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Kiano. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of a J. Frank Dobie teacher... student and her teacher to travel to Washington, DC to be honored by the United States Department of Ed as a Scholastic Art Gold Key Award recipient on September 14th through 16th, 2017.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the J. Frank Dobie School Choir to travel and perform in Orlando, Florida, April 25th through 29th, 2018.
So, move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Kiano. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the J. Frank Dobie High School Lirietts Drill Team to travel to Orlando, Florida, to learn and perform choreography on Thursday, April 19th, 2018, through Monday, April 23rd, 2018.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for the Pasadena Memorial High School Band to travel to and perform at the McNeese State University Marching Contest on Saturday, October 28th, 2017.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is... Is this where we have the presentation?
It's a presentation. That's correct. Donna Summers.
Never has data seemed more insignificant to me than it does right now.
It was planned before Harvey.
It was planned before Harvey.
Prior to Harvey.
So, we're just gonna celebrate some information from STAR and state accountability. There we go. The first thing is the district did achieve a MET standard rating, as did 60 of our campuses. What you see here are the points we received in each one of the four domains. The green one is index one, that's student achievement, what percent passed tests that were taken. The target there was 60. That's where you see the bar, and we exceeded that to 72. The points required for progress were 22, and we achieved 39 points. For our closing performance gaps, this is percent economically disadvantaged and the performance of our historically lower performing student groups. In that one, the target was 28, and we have a 42. And then, in post-secondary readiness, which is higher levels of performance, as well as graduation rates, diploma rates, and that kind of stuff, we got 72 points, and the target there was 60. One thing I don't have a slide on, but it does apply to index four, and I know we've celebrated it on multiple occasions, is that the district broke the 90% mark for graduation rate, so we will continue to celebrate that. Just to give an idea of district, region, and state comparisons, we were very tight in line with the state and the region. The district is in blue, the region is in green, and the state is in red. And also, for index three, which is the percent economically disadvantaged in our lower performing student groups, we exceeded state performance there. So, another good celebration for us. Including more celebrations, there were 12 subject test areas where we were at or above state performance. We have grade-three reading, English and Spanish, four Spanish, three and four Spanish math, four writing, English and Spanish. Our intermediates exceeded state performance in grade-seven and eight math, as well as in eighth-grade science and social studies, and our high school students also exceeded state performance in U.S. history and, of course, exam. Some honorable mentions, so these may not be places where we exceeded the state, but these are some good growth numbers here. For grade-five math, we had a 5% increase. For grade-seven reading, we had a 6% increase, and we also had a 6% increase in the Algebra I and, of course, exam. Some items of interest, as we review data throughout the coming year, and we will have some more required public hearings as the state continues to put out performance data. But the first one is middle school pre-advanced placement, our PAP math program. That did have a change, and one of the impacts of that change is that students go from grade-five math star to grade-seven math star. So, students who would have passed the grade-six math test are not taking it, and all of them are taking the grade-seven test. So, you may see a dip in some of the grade-six math, but that's why, because we had a program change. That dip used to just be in another grade level. It's not that we didn't have it, but the programming changed, so if you see something in grade-six math, that's why. Another one to consider when you're looking at data compared to prior years is our elementary bilingual program, going grade-three Spanish to grade-four English. We have a lot more students making that transition in third to fourth grade instead of fourth to fifth grade. So, where students may have passed the Spanish test, they may not be passing it at the same rates when they take the English test. So, we've seen a lot of change in that program, too. Good changes, but they don't always get reflected in the data the way we would like. And the last one, which you're well aware of, the special education testing program in Texas has been unstable for years, and it continues to do that, and the accommodations, the kinds of things the kids could use on the test, was all brand-new, and there wasn't much practice for those kiddos. So, just some things to keep in mind as you look at data moving forward. I wanted to talk about distinction designations. These are the real good celebrations and kind of beyond state accountability, the gold medals. Every campus could get a distinction designation in reading, math, for progress, for closing achievement gaps, and post-secondary readiness. Campuses that give a science test, which would be our middle, intermediate, and high school, could get six distinctions, and our high schools and our intermediates could get up to seven, because they give a social studies test. And the way they do that, to give distinctions, they find a campus... For instance, Pasadena High School, they find the 40 campuses across the state most like Pasadena in grades served, size, percent economically disadvantaged, percent English limited language, and then they just rank their scores. And the idea is you want to be in the top 10, and the more times you're in the top 10, the more likely you are to get a distinction. So, we had 42 campuses that had enough times in that top 10 that they earned a distinction. We had 124 total distinction designations district-wide. They were spread across reading, math, science... I'm sorry, reading, math, and progress at about 20 campuses achieving those, 11 in science, five in social studies. Of course, fewer campuses are eligible for that one. But our big one was 32 campuses getting a distinction for closing gaps, and that really does speak to what we do with our kids. Some special recognitions there, and I know you've seen this list. We had three elementary campuses got all five of the distinctions for which they were eligible. Miller and Southmar got six of the seven. Lo Max and Milila got five of six, and Bondi Parkview and Pasadena High School got five of seven. So, those are some wonderful achievements for those campuses. Looking at it a little differently, because we had a lot of campuses that did good, but may not have quite made it to having enough quartile ones. We went back and looked at how many campuses got ranked in the top 10 on anything, and there were 53 campuses that earned 269 top-10 placements. We're almost done. So, then, we had one more thing we wanted to do, because we were really looking at things to celebrate, and that is, not only did I come in the top 10, but I came in number one, two, or three. And that is really some good stuff to celebrate, and I haven't even sent the principals this yet, so we have a lot more celebrating to do with them. But we had 17 campuses that earned a number-three spot. We had 13 campuses that earned a number-two spot somewhere, and we had 11 campuses earning 19 number-one spots out of their 40. So, those are some really good things for our campuses. There is more to come. I know that was terribly exciting for you. Later this fall, we will get the official Texas academic performance report that we need to have a public hearing for. Schools will be required to send out their annual school report cards in December with student report cards and fellow report cards. And the last thing is 2018 state accountability. Right now, we have no answers. A lot more questions than answers, because they changed the whole system in the last legislative session. So, we are going to three domains, but we don't have a lot of the details that tell us how they're gonna calculate it. And then, of course, everything is pending the commissioner's decision on Harvey and students who are misplaced, so that all is information to be coming. Any questions, from me?
I have a couple of questions. The targets, those were set by us, right?
The targets, no. Those targets are set by the state, and they vary. So, the district's targets are different than the high school's targets, are different than the middle and intermediate, and those are different than the elementary.
But like, for example, on index one, the target of 60.
That's a state-set number.
It's a state target. Okay. And then, regarding the end-of-course exams, how does that reflect... How is that reflective of a student that's exempt from an end-of-course exam?
That's different. The end-of-course that she's talking about would be just star, and then, teachers have their own end-of-course exams, and based on their attendance, they get exemptions for those. So, we use the vocabulary on both end-of-course.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. You've done a great job. Thanks for keeping us updated. And that is great news.
So positive.
Absolutely.
Everything's happening good.
Yeah. Okay. So, we have no student achievement. We have a lot of student achievements, but... And looking forward to a lot more.
Madam President, can I say something?
Yes, she may.
The student achievement, we'll be seeing tomorrow with the superintendent, when she displays something, some information to your administrators, while we watch tonight. And in that, you've got not only the student achievement, the teacher, the administrator, the... I'm gonna throw the superintendent in there, and the community. And so, that... This month's achievement has to go to all those people that went that extra mile during this horrible storm, and they're still going that extra mile. And so, this achievement is for a lot of people, and it'd be nice just to send something to the South Belt Leader or one of the other newspapers, to tell them that we recognize the fact that they were there for us when we needed them, and that the achievement this year, I mean, this month, has a lot of people's names in it. We just can't share them all. And I think you'd probably find that Marie will be happy to put that... She's one of the individuals that helped you, I think, at...
She was a mastermind behind it, and, of course, a force to be reckoned with, to say the least. Very positive.
There was a tornado during that storm, and it was Marie Flickin'.
There you go.
And she was over there working to make... But there's a lot of schools.
She made a difference in lives.
And so on and so forth. I know Kenny was over there working, and a lot of people where you were, but all over the district, people have stepped up, they've made a difference. So, to me, this achievement award goes to a lot of people. There are student achievement, there's community achievement, there's teachers, there's administrators, there's superintendent, and it's pretty amazing. And if y'all haven't seen the video, it'll almost make you cry.
I shared it with Cabinet.
Anybody from the paper here? Anybody from the paper here? No, they ought to be. They ought to share it with them, because those people ought to see what the people in the Pasadena School District think, and what can happen when people step up and take care of their home. And ours really did.
I agree. A lot of life lessons have been learned by a lot of people. These kids that, you know, they haven't sat on their laurels, they've gotten out there, and they've gone to the schools, they've gone out into the community, and they've worked, and they've seen what giving back means. And I think that's a lesson, without having school in session, you can't beat the lesson that those kids were taught. And that will stick in their minds for their entire lifetime. I'm so proud of this community, of our students, of our teachers, of our employees, everybody in this community and other surrounding communities have just made us PISD proud, Houston proud, PISD strong.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Roberts.
We have a lot to be proud of, and, of course, a lot of people that made that possible, students included, parents, community members. My staff has been tirelessly working, and, of course, that transfers to the campuses and departments that have been doing so much. You know, you're proud when you go and win an award at a band contest or a soccer game, but don't get me started how proud I am right now, because it's unbelievable what's been happening in this community, and it's awesome. It's really awesome. I am just darn proud, Mr. Bailey. I don't cry. You know, I make fun of maybe a past superintendent that used to tear up here and there, but...
I've seen you do that a time or two.
Well, it was a week of some tears being shed, of how proud I was.
I watched that video though.
I know. It'll... If you leave a drive, then something's wrong.
Yeah.
Because we have just come together like never before, and we always have been a tight-knit family and a great community and a supportive community, but we've, you know, we've done things that have touched the lives of so many, but saved lives, and, you know, of course, give people hope for the future. And if people want to talk about kids, the future's bright with PISD kids.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. Man, I'll tell you what, we can end it here and feel good about the way this meeting ended.
But we're gonna move on and cover business.
And in the financial section, both the first and second items were approved at the 8/31/17 special call board meeting. Item three is consideration and possible approval of Amendment Two with JNT Resource Partners, LP, DBA, TCG Administrators, LP, for 403B administration.
So, move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion?
We do have two guests here, and John, I apologize. I wrote it down in Cabinet, and it disappeared, so I must have picked up a different book. So, John, will you introduce our guests that are here from TCG?
With TCG, we have Sandy Stouffer and Melissa Kirk. They're here representing the company, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if we have any questions over these next three agenda items concerning this.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for being here.
Total what?
Total conversation group.
Okay, thank you.
So is there any discussion on this first item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of resolution concerning PISD 457 Voluntary Retirement Savings Plan.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of interlocal agreement resolution with Education Service Center, Region 10, to provide 457B FICA Alternative Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item, number six, was approved at the 8/31/17 special call board meeting. Moving to item seven. Consideration and possible approval of interlocal agreement with TASBE for Unemployment Compensation Program for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Who was that? Was that you, Marshall?
Kenny, not both.
Okay, motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the interlocal agreement with Region Four Education Service Center, Region ESC Four, for staff development, training, and instructional supplies.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Keano. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of resale of foreclosed properties for delinquent taxes. This is at 13103 Conklin. It's number 00, I'm sorry, 044-054-000-0007.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of resale of foreclosed properties for delinquent taxes. This is, is that correct, Dexter Zero Conklin? Okay. The number is 0440540000042.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
By any chance are these adjoining properties?
They are, except there is a third strip that runs between those two. So they are, they're a joint property, but there isn't a strip.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item was another, oh, this is an item we added to the agenda within the 72-hour parameter. It's discussion and possible action on revised resolution dealing with employee pay in the aftermath of Hurricane Tropical Storm Harvey.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion?
Board members, this is just a change in the dates. Once we saw the extent of damages, we had to, of course, change plans to resume school on September 11th, so that's the reason for the revision.
So are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving to the operations section. Consideration and possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number 015, for the new Dobie High School ninth-grade campus project.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number 36, for the new LF Smith Elementary School replacement project.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Keano. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number 003, for the Dr. Kirk Lewis Career and Technical High School addition project.
So moved.
First.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2014 bond contingency pool funding for the relocation of existing playground equipment and outdoor accessories to the new LF Smith Elementary School campus.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion?
Yeah, question. Just noticing that, would it be, if you're relocating that, would it be cheaper just to buy new equipment?